Morning, thank you for being here. I clocked wrong. Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in a word of prayer by Andy Race and then remain standing for our place.
Father, we just thank you today, Father, and thank you for this country that we live in, the freedoms that we have, this country, this state, and this county. Thank you for the people of Service County, for the children of your worship, for the vision, the guidance, and the decision that they have to make. Is there some express thank you for it?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Andy. Called to order the regular session of the Commissioners' Court on Wednesday, September the twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, and nine oh one A M. Now, form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with a reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners' Court and approval, same for August thirty first, twenty twenty one, and September the fifteenth, twenty twenty one. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton.
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaFret. Is there any questions, discussion, or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. You have the bills before you. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion on the bills that have been submitted?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On, uh, under the Card Service Center, uh, they have a bill here for precinct four, uh, something about the tax office. We don't even have a card, so we didn't do it. I don't know, I don't know who it should be. Well, no, that's, that's possibly. But they pay with their cards? Well, that, that may be right, I don't know. We just got these and I looked over, I didn't recognize it. If that's what it is, I, I have no problem with it. Sixty dollars and eighty cents.
Big old truck.
Yeah. I hope it was good. You may hear it. You may hear it. Okay, if that's, if that's what it is, I, I, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion on the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor of proven, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion on the bills that's been submitted for ratification? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business, is there any general business, any announcements or anything we need to be made aware of?
We got that military show coming at the end.
Yes.
We do, yeah. So next weekend is the Fall Fest right out here, or Camp Fall Fest, and then October sixteenth is the military show that's gonna happen over in Trade Bay at the million four thousand.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Any other general business we need to be made aware of? Okay, being none, we'll move item number six, public comments. Scott, did anybody, anyone sign up for pub, no one signed up? I don't have anything here. Uh, we'll move item number seven, discuss and consider approval of Van Zant County event permit for Saint Teresa Catholic Church for prayer raid scheduled October the tenth, twenty twenty one. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaFret. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider improve amended purchasing policy and procedures manual. Sandy, did you want to address the court on that?
Judge, Commissioner, good morning. The last time the purchasing policy was approved by Commissioners' Court was two thousand fourteen. We haven't made a couple of change, well, we've made one change for sure. If you look on page three, uh, requisitions, the OPOS said to send the county judge for approval. The requisitions are now coming straight to the office of the office. The county judge was, yeah, so many acts where so many tasks, so we just moved that.
We voted, yeah, the court, the court did, yeah.
We made a policy.
Yeah.
I changed that to just say the requisition for the county office. And then the, the second thing I wanted the court to consider, uh, we have a lot of requests from day to day on increasing POs. Once a PO has been submitted, then, you know, we have a lot of people coming back and wanting to increase a PO. There's some confusion in my office and on a set of that. Every time, you know, something comes about, if one comes through and it's a larger amount, the girls are coming to me in their morning, should we do this? So it would be a lot easier on my office to have a policy. Now Commissioner LaFret came and visited with me and he had a concern. You know, he said, if we're out on the road and I've issued a PO for eight hundred tons of coal, and it's two o'clock in the afternoon and I run out, and I need more. What's wrong with me calling and wanting to increase that PO so I can use that road? And, and I agree with that. So, uh, if you would just give me a guideline that we can put in the policy so that, you know, my ladies are comfortable with raising a PO. I mean, cause, you know, here at the last week or two, you come in and ask forty thousand, twenty thousand, and it's all road material, which we understand is expensive. And you're all trying to finish up your work, road work for this fiscal year. But I would like you to consider an amount. And if you just tell me as long as we check the budget and there's money remaining, that's fine with me, but I just need something to put in my policy so that my ladies, when they're doing this, will be comfortable with raising those POs. Sometimes.
That's the problem.
Sometimes, you know, and I'm not gonna name departments, but there are people that they go and order products and they go, oh, I don't have a PO. So they go searching back into their own files. Well, I still got this one open, I'll just, I'll just call and raise this one so it'll cover this. And, and that does happen, so just make sure to be aware of that. And the PO system is protection for all of us. It, it's designed for us to stay within our expense budget, you know. When, when someone doesn't get the, we've had a situation where, you know, so, an individual didn't get a PO and several bills come in at the end of the year and they go over budget. So it's a protection for the process. And, and I go with my heart, well, so. I'm just asking the court to give me guidelines, what it could in this policy.
Okay. Any questions for Sandy?
And too, there's been times, Sandy, when if you order a, you know, four, five hundred tons of D mix or oil sand, and you're putting it out and they put out more than that. You know, they, I've had cases where they put out two, three thousand dollars more than what we order. So, and we used it, I mean, we put it down, but so it'd be a case, that, that'd be a case right there to have some sort of policy in case, you know, they overshoot it.
And you know, it's like Commissioner Brad expressed to me, he said, you know, cause the first thing I suggested was just open up a new PO, and he's like, well, you're doing the same thing. You know, you increase it or you open a new PO, they're both the same effect, and I understand that. I, I, you know, I just, I just need something that my ladies downstairs, when they're doing these increases, they know they have a policy to go by.
Well, you've got in here five hundred dollars, and you know, we have a lot of times where we'll send our large equipment in to have it worked on, and they'll tell us it's gonna be X number of dollars, but they find something else in the mix and it's another twelve hundred. And if we're five hundred, we, we're dead in the water.
And this was just where we started.
Is there a number, is there a number anyone's comfortable with?
I'll just throw it out, cause, but what about what's left in that line?
Money in the pile, we got it covered, we got our checks and balances, but sure.
Well, I understand where you're going, and, and it is sometimes misused. But any, any of, I think any of us right here are going to give a very good explanation of when we called out to raise a PO. And, and every department should, whatever department it is, if they're, if they're calling the auditor's office to raise a PO, you need an explanation, and they shouldn't be offended when you ask for that explanation. So I, I don't know how. I can see where it won't work on low road and bridge, but I don't want to set something different for road and bridges. And the first time, well, these commissioners knew what they want for road and bridge, they treat everybody else different. I'm trying to make it not so obvious.
You tell me to raise a PO to whatever you have behind the budget, I have no idea what you order out there that didn't require a PO that's gonna be coming in as well, you know, and, and I'm just not saying your departments, it's all.
Countywide.
If it's all possible, I do think that you need to issue new PO, but, but emergency situations, like Mr. LaFret said, or I've said, or, or, or Commissioner West said, where, you know, that, that, that's a big problem. You send a piece of equipment down, a whole kit to, to work on, and, and they give you a little estimate upfront, and then when it gets fixed, well, it's five thousand more than what they estimated.
And, and I don't mind issuing a new PO, but my, but my, when I find out it's more, my PO's gonna be after the fact. And so then, I'm breaking policy then because I'm making a PO after I've got them.
Have always encouraged anyone, like, when the air conditioner's right, just do a PO, just five hundred dollars, let's just hit a PO store so that we, we made the effort. So, um, it's just an issue in my office because my girls get frustrated.
How about eighty percent of line item? Didn't cover any other bills that were out there that.
That if cases of PO that weren't, cause that's a good point you got, Sandy. There's, there's money out there that they didn't require a PO.
Right.
It's coming through, but if it did eighty percent, that would cover, that would cover, that would still leave something in the lineup. But that means that girl's gonna sit down there and figure out eighty percent.
Yeah.
Ever. Ever, ever.
It gives them a policy.
Okay.
And, and we can set that now, but I would, I recommend if, uh, if y'all talk and figure out something that would work, but we can have a little workshop on it and bring it back to court. I'm, I'm willing to do whatever.
I'm good with that.
Great, yeah, okay, you're good, yeah. Is that a motion, Mr. West?
Yes.
To approve the, the, uh, purchasing policy and procedures manual? With that change on the purchase of order requirements, that if any reason a PO needs to be increased, the amount allowed is, is to be no greater than eighty percent of the line item. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any other question or discussion?
I, I would highly recommend anybody ever raising PO also has a very good reason for it, Sandy. So that we can cover the, the people that are trying to, uh, get around the issue. Including road and bridge.
Yeah. And I was wondering, does that need to be in writing? I mean, I mean, it, it couldn't be like LaFret said, it couldn't be at that moment, but you could come back, if you call and say, okay, I'm gonna be just, where she can put it with, but I don't know that it needs.
Do you want to amend the motion with the explanation?
We always print the, the email out and attach it to the purchase order. You know, the request to increase is always attached to.
Okay, that covers it.
Okay. Once we increase a PO, we have to reprint it, make it to county's office. Put the new one in, and it's always got the, uh,
Excellent. Okay. Okay, that covers it.
Sandy, while we're on this, you know, our administrator is out. I guess can we, uh, we're gonna need some POs here because of the first, this will start October one, can we submit our requests through your office?
Yes, I will, we'll, we'll work with you until you're in the start.
Most of these are probably gonna be at Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, any other discussion or questions for Sandy? Being none, all, all in favor of mending the purchase, uh, purchasing policy and procedures manual, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and approve a twenty twenty two Van Zant County Resolution Engine and Defense Grant Program. This is the Engine and Defense Grant, we do it every, every year.
Number nine? No, that's nine, that resolution for me.
No, it's.
No.
No, you're a ten.
Number nine's to, to discuss and approve the twenty twenty two Van Zant County Resolution Engine Defense Grant. Uh, we have to do, we have to turn this in, then we have to get our, all the district, the district court, the county court at law, court, the juvenile, we have to put our plans in. And this is to get reimbursed on some of the money. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner LaFret to approve the twenty twenty two Van Zant County Resolution Engine Defense Grant Program. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider approval resolution for precinct three solid waste grant.
Well, it helped fire right agenda.
How many agendas?
I got two.
You have your personal.
I didn't bring it today. Okay, that, uh, this resolution is on the, the, uh, collection, the tri-state event that precinct three, uh, and city of Will's Point have every year. This is so I can apply for the, uh, East Texas Council's government, three thousand dollar grant to finance that, and that's one of the requirements of the grant. So I'm asking that you approve this, if you approve the resolution, you're approving for me to put in for the.
Is that a motion, Keith?
That's a motion.
Okay, got a motion by Keith to approve the resolution for precinct three solid waste grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those are same, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider interlocal agreement between Van Zant County Precinct One Road and Bridge and the City of Grand Celine, Texas. Commissioner LaFret.
Yes, sir, this is the same interlocal agreement I've done with city of Fruitville and city of Edgewood, let's may, uh, work with them, assist them, recruit costs as necessary.
Okay, is that?
I'll make a motion, yeah.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner LaFret, second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, uh, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider an interlocal agreement between Van Zant County Precinct Four Road and Bridge and Hickory Hills Homeowners Association.
Judge, I want to, uh, table that till next time. Our county attorney said it can't be an interlocal agreement, it just has to be a contract, so, and, and we said in here, interlocal, so.
Okay.
Interlocal agreement has to be between two, uh, governmental agencies.
Okay.
And a homeowner association is not that.
Got a motion to table item number twelve, is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being, uh, being none, all in favor, say aye. We did, all opposed, same sign. Table item number twelve and move to thirteen, discuss and consider revision of lot fourteen in Albright Edition in precinct three.
Okay, uh, I want to remind y'all that, uh, I brought this to you, uh, several weeks ago to give time for us to post it on our, uh, website, uh, under our new subdivision guidelines. This is a, a lot that, uh, an existing lot that they're, they're dividing it in half. It will, lot fourteen will go away and lot fourteen A and lot fourteen B will replace it. Is there anyone here that, uh, we, we sent letters, the, uh, people that are, that are applying for the replat, uh, the revision, they sent letters to all the neighboring properties. I have, uh, receipts of that, and, and then we posted it on, uh, our website for thirty days, and so, uh, there's, I see nothing wrong with it. I make a motion that we approve the, the plat revision of lot fourteen in Albright Edition.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
Did you receive any correspondence back from the letters that were sent out, or?
No.
Nothing?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. Well, uh, uh, some, some of them did, uh, get acknowledgement back, but they don't, they don't have to sign for it.
Right.
But some of them did sign for it and, and acknowledge it there, you see. But I was, uh, may or the people petitioning had, had any protest on.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider revision of lot thirty five in the Canon Land Subdivision in precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is the same thing, I brought it the same day as I brought, uh, lot fourteen of the Albright Edition, and, uh, I've got all the papers back on it. By the way, on, on both, uh, of these replats, there's a letter in there that addresses the, if there's any lanes on the, the current lot.
Yeah.
And, uh, one of them, uh, this, this one here that we're on thirty five in the Canon Land, there's no lanes on it, a, a statement in there, and by the way, on fourteen, there is a lien on it, but the lien owner, owner wrote a letter, notarized, signed and notarized, that he had no problem with that. So, anyway, this is exactly the same thing, lot thirty five in the Canon Land Subdivision is being divided in half, it's a, uh, eleven acre lot, it's being, uh, divided into a something, two, two lots, one of them will be nine and the other is the rest of, uh, nine acres. I've got all the receipts back where they sent it. The only thing I want a stipulation on here on their, on their plat that they turned in, it shows that the, uh, the new, the smaller lot will be lot thirty five A, which is correct, but the larger lot is it lea, is leaving it named lot thirty five, and you can't do that. Lot thirty five goes away. It'll be lot thirty five A and lot thirty five B, so the only condition I want to put on there is that they'll have to bring me a plat showing that their lots thirty five A and thirty five B, not, not thirty five. So I'm, I make a motion under those stipulations, to, to prove under those stipulations.
Okay. So your motion is to approve the revision in Canon Land Subdivision in precinct three of lot thirty five A and thirty five B?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and will have to be corrected on their, their file, but I have to take.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider approval of the Alley Subdivision located at the corner of Van Zant County Road twenty five eleven and Van Zant County Road twenty five oh one in precinct two.
Yes, uh, this is, uh, the, uh, person, you wanna?
person you want to,
Do I have to?
You don't have to.
I'm just, I buy eleven point two acres, and you're providing that with six lots, each one of them are in, uh, I'm not loud enough.
Yeah.
Um, each, I'm buying eleven point two acres on the corner of twenty-five oh one and twenty-five eleven, and I, um, plotted it out for six lots, all being between one point five and one point seven acres. So, and I'm building barnominiums on them.
And state your name?
Um, I'm Suzy Terrell.
Okay.
Now it's my turn. I will say that Suzy Terrell followed all the guidelines, uh, with our rules and regulation of subdivision, and so I make a motion that, uh, we approve this.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Lepred. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to make a comment, just so everyone knows, Ms. Terrell, uh, on the, we video all this, and the people that are watching it, they can't hear unless you're talking to the mic. We, we hear you, but they don't hear you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item sixteen, discuss and consider approval of Austin Farm Subdivision in precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is a, uh, five lot subdivision, um, at the corner of County Road thirty-five oh two and, uh, FM thirteen ninety-five, that north of Will's Point. No road in it, everything's good. It's, uh, the application been turned in, everything's checked out, got all the letters we need. I make a motion, we approve.
Okay. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? How many, how many?
Five.
Five.
Five lots.
Okay, five lot.
There are, there, uh, they range, uh, up to, uh, three acres, uh, down to a little greater than, than one.
Okay. Okay, any other question, discussion? On Austin Farm Subdivision. Being none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approval of Francis Edition Subdivision in, uh, precinct two.
Yes, this is the little subdivision, uh, at the, uh, corner of Highway nineteen and FM, uh, Farming County Road twenty-three eighteen, and they follow subdivisions to the T, so I make a motion, we approve this.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider approval of J two M Ranch Estate Subdivision in precinct three.
Yes, sir, this is a three lot subdivision, and Dennis is here to, to represent if anybody has any questions, but, uh, everything's been turned in on it. Got all of our, our letters back, and, uh, everything's in line on it. I make a motion, we approve. Three, three lots of, uh, no, no, no roads involved. All, all joint, all front on the county route.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lepred. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to mention something. This, uh, today, we've had four new subdivisions and two subdivisions that were changing a little bit. That's really growing our camp. Normally, we had, we wouldn't have that many, at least a year ago, we wouldn't have had that many in three months.
Yeah. Any other question, discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider retraining, uh, retaining, uh, engineering consultant Brian Abbott to review preliminary subdivision flats.
Yeah, this is, uh, something that could consider. Uh, Brian Abbott has an engineer, uh, office out here off of, uh, Martin's Mill Road, twenty-nine oh, uh, twenty-nine oh one, was it FM? Okay, and, uh, he, I've, I've contacted, uh, I, I called, contacted Epic Engineering Firm, out on their site twenty, and they don't really get into, uh, subdivisions. They're more of a construction engineer, but Josh did refer me to, uh, Brian Abbott. Brian Abbott's a homeboy, he's been here, grew up here, he's got his engineer degree, and he deals in subdivision. He knows how to look them over and either approve or disapprove, he can tell you what's wrong with. Anyway, he, he wants to, uh, charge a, a flat fee of a hundred and fifty dollars an hour to, to look over these subdivisions. I don't know whether y'all want to consider that or not.
Is that a motion? Is that?
Well, um, yeah, it's a motion.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second that. Okay, got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion?
Uh, we, we, uh, we definitely need it, uh, just like Mr. West said, this, this is just, uh, we've done these six today. I've got at least three in there.
In the basket.
At least maybe four, not, not just in there, that's been, that are there for us. They haven't applied yet, they haven't, the clock hasn't started, but they're lining things up, and, and I'm talking to several others, and we, we really need a professional to be looking at this.
And I would allow you to speak, uh, that you, you're in subdivisions. Oh, I thought you was.
I, I was one of the next comments, I was.
Okay, boy, yeah. You are, I'm allowed.
Absolutely, okay. Of course, I have a little bit of experience like this. Uh, one thing I would suggest, and I don't know if it's fortunate or bad for you, a hundred and fifteen hours more than reasonable for that kind of review, but I, I would suggest to try to talk to them about just having more flat fee, that way you can work with your budget, because you got that money coming in that you charged upfront in order to cover these costs, but what happens, it's really, really, you know, some of them are going to be real simple for them to look at, you know, in and out. But then you might have something, especially if you get a big developer come in here, you need to make certain that the money that you're charging upfront is going to be able to compensate them. Because if you have a big developer come in here and do a four hundred lots of this, he might be reviewing for a day or more. So, just like I said, you might want to take into consideration, uh, the money that you're charging versus the money that's going to be going out, it's going to be adequate. Like I said, a hundred and fifty is more than reasonable from the fees that I send from these engineering firms to do this, but, you know, I said, I don't know if you can work out some.
I'm glad you mentioned that, because we, uh, uh, we, we're going to have to adjust our, our fee schedule, uh. We, we've got a very reasonable fee schedule now.
I believe so.
And, but we're going to have to adjust it to where, if a big one comes in and times, we're going to stay in there that this, five, say this five hundred dollars that you, you pay.
Correct.
Only, is only good for, uh, so many hours of our consulting. After that, there's an.
Yeah, there's going to have to be, because, like I said, in, in that little, all these little ones that y'all talked about today, I'm not him, but I, I could say he could more than reasonably do that review, and it's possible, but I'm sitting there thinking in the, down rugged, you're already seeing what you have now, but you get one of the big developers come in here, and he throws you out a four hundred lot subdivision, his review could run way over the money that you take in. What is going to cover?
I think we all agree.
So, so that's going to be something that you just might want to consider, and then, you know, and if you got somebody here local, I don't know, I don't know this, you know, this gentleman here, I've just, from what I've seen in other counties, is, you know, if you deal with a very, very small company, you need to make certain he understands that you're on a time clock that's dictated. So, when you turn that thing in, his, his turnaround time, if you have fifty of these things, you know, I, I'm not, you have this many right now, but in a year's time, if you have, say, twenty of them in one agenda, you're going to be able to get it to him and get it back to you so that you don't fall in, in, in coming to default, you know, when your clock runs out. So, that, that, that would be things, make certain that you have somebody that can get these things in and out, he understands it, and you don't need nothing to compress, because I've seen when you use a very small firm. But on the other hand, and, uh, Mr. Pearson, I discussed the other day, I had one of them in another county, where I submitted, one of the big engineering companies looked at it, we got a review, and it came back, one of the engineers said, we want these changes. We made the changes, we submitted it, it's sent back for a second review, a different engineer looked at it, and came back, and we got two pieces of paper. The second engineer looked at it, wanted the changes back to where we had the issue. And of course, I gave that to the developer, he went up and said, hey, what do you want? I said, just leave it, have it, have it. But when you deal with a great big company, you may be dealing with numerous different people every time. A small company's not, things are normally cheaper, but we also need to determine where we're going to be, is, it won't be overwhelmed, because he have the capability of doing so many of these, because that may be something we have to take into consideration when people turn these things in.
Yeah, well, we're locked to thirty days from the application till either approval or it's already granted.
Correct.
Uh, and we only have two meetings during that thirty day period. It really.
Yeah, it puts you in kind of a time crunch. You know, the state legislatures put you on it.
Well, I think what's been resolved, that is making the engineer report for, for part of the checkoff list. They don't, you know.
No, we're prior to the, the thirty days.
That's right. So, we'll have to have all the, all the stuff together before they make the, uh, application and it starts.
So, you're going to have the developer responsible for contacting the engineer. That takes you out of, if, if he, if it's done prior to it, then you're not in the mix.
Well, I guess the developer could leave it in our office, and we could take it out there, or the engineer could come pick it up. But the time wouldn't start just because we, uh, set it in our office. I mean, it's got to be out there, it's got to be part of the checkoff, it's just like everything.
But, but I think what he's saying is, if you, if you have it as part of the checkoff list, then it's the responsibility of.
The developer is not, you're not.
We can have, we can have the deal where it, uh, you have the checkoff list, but you also have to have the approval from the engineers that we get, but, but then we'd have to be, uh.
So, what if the engineer gets behind, he don't make the timeline, you talk him out to approve?
Well, on the, on contract with Brian, it'll have to be, we have to have his results by within thirty days of us delivering it to them.
The application had started, yeah.
Yeah, you, you have, you have less time front than that. Like I said, you have two meetings in a thirty day period typically, but like I said, this is just, I mean, I'm not involved in this, I'm just giving you some, I'm giving you some insight to, to just realize that, you know, when you deal with somebody small, what I'm scared of is he's probably as busy as I'm, I am right now, and, you know, give him two or three of them, it probably won't be an issue. Just make sure you address it and talk with him about it, that, hey, if we bring you twenty of these things, what's your turnaround time going to be? Are we going to be sure that we're within our thirty days, so?
Unless thirty days hadn't started, that's what.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, thirty days hadn't started.
You can't, y'all can't, y'all cannot predict that thirty days. If that, if that.
Well, he, he, he's not going to start the clock, but I, and, and you'll have to.
Gentlemen, that, that is not up to us. If you want to turn in the subdivision today, Dennis, you go down there and pay your fee, that clock stops, then starts. When we lock it up.
He can't pay his fee until the checkoff list is complete, and it, it includes the, uh.
Yes, he can pay that thing.
But, but, but what?
He can.
I, I.
You can't stop him.
I understand.
Yes, if we don't accept it, he can't pay the fee.
Who's paying that?
We're paying it.
Take it, take it, take it, take it. That's what I'm saying, y'all, y'all have the, anyway, this is details, uh, that y'all have to work out, but I just, when I was bringing this, I thought you might want to go inside, because I've seen this done over and over and over with other counties, and, you know, the, like I said, on a fee, right, uh, you're, uh, I don't think there's.
That's one of that first fee.
Make sure you get all the detail.
That first fee should be a review fee.
Thank you, Jim.
And, and, and they, he comes and pays the fee, we take it to, to Brian, uh, and he turns it down. He comes, he tells us why it can't be done, and we turn it down. Well, then, when everything's corrected, he has to pay, the, 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 the person putting in subdivision has to pay another re, review fee. Other counties just call it a review fee, not an application fee.
And other counties, the clock don't start till they get the engineer report.
And it shouldn't. Because you don't have anything to go back. What are you, what are you going to prove?
Well, we're just going to be paying, we're going to be paying. If that's the case, we're going to be responsible for Brian paying, uh, Brian, and we're not, if fees, if he spends, if we, if he spends ten hours on the deal, we're only getting five hundred dollars. We're, it's costing us money to do this. It's not supposed to be that.
Well, that'll have to be another agenda item to address, we're doing the fee schedule.
I, I agree.
Workshop, yeah, workshop.
I guess we can go with, 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 with Mr. Abbott, and then work out the details when I talk.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion, second, to, uh, retaining engineer and consultant Brian Abbott to review preliminary subdivision flats at a hundred and fifty dollars per hour.
Judge?
Yes.
You also have to consider, uh, we don't know if that expenditure to that professional, it is considered a professional service, but you have to have a court order according to local government code two sixty-two oh two four, declaring that as a discretionary exemption. Y'all will have to have a court order as well in case expenditure comes up fifty thousand, so that we need to. It is an exemption. It is an allowable exemption, but you have to have court order to centralship from going out for proposals.
So, uh, would we need to put that on the agenda to approve that?
You have to go, you have to put it on the agenda as a discretionary exemption according to local government code two sixty-two oh two four, a professional service fee, and then like the government code, uh, twenty-two fifty-four tells you what professional services are.
Well, we're, I, I, I knew that, but I didn't worry about it, because I knew we, we estimated or we budgeted thirty thousand.
It, but look how fast you're growing. If we go over fifty thousand, we might as well do it, is it possible?
And, you know, there could be some of these that the engineer doesn't need to look at. I mean.
Yeah, that, that's why these come to us, well, some of them are going to be so simple.
So, so simple that, okay, you, you're good to go, you know, you're, you've got four lots, uh, that front a county road or a state highway, there's no road going into it. Uh, that's pretty simple right there.
Okay, we have, so we're going to need that order before we ever.
Yeah.
Approve this. But I got a motion and a second to.
I can read it. Can we? We don't need order without, sir.
You will withdraw your motion?
I guess according to our, that's probably proper, okay, just to, let me withdraw the motion on, on that item and table it. I'm making motion, we table it.
Second, who, who made the second? Okay, so the motion second's been withdrawn, the, and, and motion to table, item number nine, do we get the order? And probably do, I see the point that Dennis making, we're, we're you're charging five hundred dollars, but it's very well, if he spent all day out there, you could well go over, you, you could eat five hundred dollars of it.
Real fast.
So, need to.
If they need to be five hundred dollars, plus either like twenty-five dollars or something a lot, or so much per acre, you know, we could do that.
So, I have a motion to table, is there a second?
Ten, yes.
Ten, ten, a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We did table. Item number twenty, discuss and consider the adoption of an order setting term of Venzette County Commissioners Court for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. We have to do this at the last Commissioners Court meeting of the year, every year setting the term for the next, next year's Commissioners Court meeting. Right now, they're set on the, uh, every other Wednesday, starting, well, next year would be starting October thirteenth, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, starting October the thirteenth. I know there's been discussions, some. I know there's been discussions, some don't like Wednesday, some likes Tuesday. Doesn't matter to me, I'm here.
I think, I, I think all of our residents or, or citizens have gotten used to our system.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion, we carry on every other Wednesday.
Okay, motion to set the term of the Com- Benzick County Commissioners Court for FY twenty twenty-two on every other Wednesday, starting October the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West? Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Discussing, discuss and approve of Benzick County Emergency Service District E D six, uh, E S D number four financial statements for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. You have the, their audit before you? Is there a motion to approve it?
Some move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Melton, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments. You have all the budget amendments before you, there's quite a few of them. Guess that'll take care of it for twenty twenty-one, won't it, Sandy?
No, sir.
Even after the year's ended?
Yes, sir. Oh, we have to have two in the, I'm sorry, October first, one for twenty twenty-one budget.
No, we, yeah, for a couple of months.
Yes, sir. And I will already talk to Jennifer back there.
Go. Like a, who's Jennifer? Okay.
She's probably watching.
I bet she is. I think she's taking notes.
She is.
Is there a motion to approve the twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendments?
Some move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson?
Same.
Second by Commissioner LaPrada? Any questions or discussion?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Sandy, there were a couple or three or maybe even four amendments, uh, sheriff, that they just came up late on Jennifer's desk. Do you have copies of those or, or do you know?
Yes, sir, I should, because all of the sheriff's amendments come to my office first.
Okay.
I have, uh, one. I have four for the jail. Sheriff one.
Yeah, you know, they changed some of them, like the number, one of them went for two thousand, three thousand, if they're.
Yeah, some of their.
I didn't know, I didn't know, so they just brought it. But you, but you.
I've been over all of them.
Okay, okay.
I've received all of them.
And you're good with all of them, Sandy?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a motion.
Second. Motion second.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I made a motion.
I'm making a second.
Okay.
So you, no, Jay, second.
Okay.
We didn't hear you, Tim.
Come on.
Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider approval of August twenty-first, twenty twenty-one financial investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes as Commissioners Court. Anything, any special? Kenny? Some move, Pierce, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West? Any questions or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have a comment?
I do, we had three meetings this month and we ended up one report short, so. I've spoken, generally we have them all, but this time there's one short and Jennifer wasn't here to go them, so I didn't do it.
So Commissioner Pearson, you have a question?
I do. Which one are we sure?
Is the fire marshal.
Fire marshal. But I need, no, thank you. Inquiring minds.
No, okay, is that a motion to approve the?
Yes.
The reports, got a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Melton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
So I got two motions. Motion by Commissioner, uh, Melton, is second by Commissioner Pearson, uh, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.